All right, if everyone's ready, we'll go ahead and get started. This is the Law Ordinance Committee meeting. We have two items on the agenda tonight. We can get started with one I feel like people are probably here for, which is the sober living house legislation. We kind of talked about it last time, but I -- oh, thank you. I wanted to make sure we had like our law department here. I know we have Mr. Skelly as well from the zoning board. Your opinion, Commissioner, right?
Yeah.
But we had talked about, because under the Ohio revised code, sober living houses cannot operate if they are not seeking to get certified or don't have their certification within 18 months. And I know we had talked about just basically putting that they -- my concern, and maybe Mr. Gary can also speak to this, is possibly being preempted because the state gives them 18 months. I don't know if it would be wise for us to put in our language that unless they are already certified, they can't be operating since the state gives them that window to get certified. Tim, did you have any -- did you get a chance to look at the statute I sent?
I have looked at the statute, but I don't really have much of an opinion yet.
Okay.
You know, whether they -- how we should change our ordinance if that all.
Well, right now, we don't have -- I believe the BZA determined that the sober living houses fall into like this gray area.
That they didn't.
That they're not group homes.
Yeah.
And they're not -- we don't have any specific sober -- recovery housing is what the legal term is, but recovery housing language in our ordinances.
So I talked with Mr. Moore, and his -- my initial thought was to take the group home ordinance, which really just serves to define it and state that we have a limit per zoning district and per, like a maximum for the entire city, and add sober living to that language. Mr. Moore had some concerns about that, just in terms of like feasibility and do they really fall within the same category? And if we're restricting that number, if we've already hit that number in group homes, does it mean that we -- I have a feeling we've already hit the six total for the city of group homes. Does that mean that we cannot have any sober living homes if we are just tacking it on to the same? So he and I talked briefly, and we're not sure that that was the best way to go about it, but that we certainly need some legislation surrounding them because as it stands, there's no expectation for them to have fire inspections. There's no kind of oversight for them at all. They can just pop up and be for-profit businesses and run however they see fit. And because the state is so lenient, it just does not give us a ton of flexibility or a ton of really any -- anything we can do about when they are not serving their purpose.
I mean, my thought was, we can kind of just copy the language from the state statute saying that, you know, per the revised code, they have not more than 18 months to get certified and get their certification. Because I think if we try to shorten that, if, I mean, if we get sued, I don't know how we win that lawsuit. That's -- the state has said they have 18 months. So I think if we just do the 18 months, and then could we just create the same density requirements as the group homes have? I mean, not necessarily tack it on, but there can't be more than six recovery houses.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see why not, but that's probably Mr. Gary question.
Sorry, Tim.
This stuff is hard.
Yeah.
And I understand that. And the question includes what they're actually trying to accomplish. Recovery housing residents in the -- is defined in the code. If they're residents or individuals recovering from alcohol use disorder or drug addiction, that provides an alcohol-free and drug-free living environment, peer support assistance with paying alcohol and drug addiction services and other recovery assistance, which is bad. I think they got some stuff to show us. They better have some stuff to show us.
Right.
Because if they don't, then they're not complying with -- they don't seem to be complying with the -- what a recovery house -- housing residence is.
Right.
And so I'm concerned about that.
So do you think we should -- sorry, it's so hard to see you around the podium. Do you think we should add a provision, maybe, that they need to get in touch? As soon as they start operating, they need to get in touch with the building or planning committee?
Well, I'm just, I need to know what, you know, what they've been about, what they're applying to, you know, as a recovery housing residence or not.
Right. I just want to make sure whatever we do moving forward is feasible for -- I just want to make sure it's sustainable. So I'd like, obviously, we want to continue the conversation we're having with Izzy's House specifically, but my goal long-term is that this is not a continuing problem and that if these recovery houses want to open in Norwood, there's a clear set of processes for them to do so, and some sort of oversight about whether that is they register with the city. I just don't know how feasible it is for us to maintain a registration. I don't know if that's putting too much of a tax on departments. I do not know. But there needs to be some kind of control and oversight for this.
The group homes, too, right?
That I am not totally sure.
Is there a running question for me? Because if the fire department comes out early? Yeah, we absolutely register.
Or in court?
They've got their six hundred and twenty.
That does not seem very clear to me in the ordinances, but that may be the policy with the building department.
Right.
Or with the BZA.
Well, and I think technically, like, all landlords are supposed to let the building department know they're operating. I think we have a hard time keeping track of that, too. Um. So do we not have a certificate of occupancy anymore?
No. I don't think we've got a certificate of occupancy for these people.
Okay.
Because of this unconstitutional, so they eliminated that. No, I think that there was not a certificate of occupancy issued to this owner. Or if there was, it was to the -- to a family, you know, one, a one, it's given to a one family unit.
Are we talking about 1753 miles?
Yes.
Nothing was given by the state at all. They just moved in. The owners tried to rent it for eight months at Xavier. They had Xavier student housing, and when they couldn't because the enrollment's down at Xavier, that's when I guess they fell upon this. And the court response team, I've talked with them several times today, they gave me a lot of information, and they're saying these things are popping up all over Norwood because there is no legislation. And the one by us was not. It was a single-family home, and they were saying fifteen women were going to be -- that's against our, you know, codes. I mean, that's fire code, that's building code. There's four, five per kitchen, it was what it always was, so I don't, I think we have a lot, so.
Yep.
And then, Tim, I have a procedural question as well. Because would this need to go through the zoning? Like, I'm assuming this needs to go through the zoning board for final approval? Is this one where we would need to have council vote on it and then send to them, send it to them for a final vote?
No.
No.
This is, this is already on the docket for the November 19th zoning ordinance.
Oh, okay. Because they had orders written against making it for overcrowding. That's what Mark Reeves told me.
Mark Reeves has issued a letter saying, you know, please put no more than four adults there.
Right, so overcrowding.
Right. So that's what we're dealing with, and I expect that they'll present something.
Well, Sam, can I ask you something?
Sure.
So since that has happened, they did a mass move out of the women and put them over the Rhine, and now they have taken all the men from the Rhine and put them in this house. So how can they do that when the hearing's not even till November 19th? And they're trying to play a game, is what they're doing.
Well, I'm not gonna, you know, I'm not gonna say they're trying to play a game.
Well, I am.
I'm just, that's fine. But, you know, they've got a duty to show that they're, they've got a duty to show the factors or the impact of the factors that have to be considered by the board. And I expect they'll do that, or they'll lose.
Well, they didn't lose.
Well, now, we haven't had an appeal.
On Hopkins, it's five-zero when Izzy's House went up against the --
Different, different property, isn't it?
Izzy's House. It was in Izzy's House.
Yeah, it's a sober living house. All right.
Okay.
I'm planning to appear on the 19th and ask some questions.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Sorry, I was kind of jumping around there. My question was more like, if we want to pass legislation.
Right.
Can we start here? And then does the zoning board?
Sure.
Okay.
Start anywhere you want.
Okay.
But sure.
Do you think the zoning board will need to approve it first, like, for it to become effective?
No.
Okay. I just know sometimes that's how.
Zoning board is there as an administrative appeal entity.
Okay, so that's why sometimes we vote on what they propose.
Right.
Got it.
They may ask.
Got it. Can I ask a question? So if this is listed as a women's sober living on Williams Avenue, and now we're going to a hearing about women's sober living, but it's no longer women in there, how does that work?
I think that because we don't have any kind of oversight or ruling about it, there's no registration, whatever, they can call it whatever they want to call it.
Right.
But we aren't, it's not registered as a women's sober living facility anywhere with the city, so it doesn't matter who lives there.
Yeah, I don't think the gender matters.
If there's overcrowding, it would still be an issue whether they're male or female. Right. They're not registered as like a business with the city or anything that says that women live there. And I would imagine especially because it's still the same parent company that's operating it.
Okay.
Has anyone had an opportunity, and I apologize, I have not reached out to Ralph to find out if we have any sense of how many these sorts of businesses we have?
I did not.
Mr. Skelly, do you have any idea, just from your boots on the ground?
No, overall, no. So at least for Izzy's House, this is the second of two, but other ones on Hopkins, I believe they had a BZA hearing in either March or May. And I think it's people that represented, whether KMA or whatever their belief was that because they received approval for that, the similar establishment would proceed without filing a --
When did they get approval? I'm sorry, did I, did you say that they got approval?
By the BZA, I believe in either March or May. I don't have the data, but just talking to the representative of Izzy's House, sorry, KMA or whatever.
KMA, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And they were not required to submit a certificate of occupancy?
They should have.
Because it was a change of use.
Correct.
Right.
Okay.
But getting back to your question for this committee, so similar to how the other group homes work, one of the ways you can skim the cat is they will find, will define it, will put provisions, and will make it conditional use, where the BZA would have to entertain an application subject to complying with the site conditions or whatever.
Okay. Is that what we, I don't think we have that language in the group home one, do we? I don't think so. I think that would be a good idea, though.
Yeah, but I believe in most of the committed uses for whatever adult home. Again, there's probably many ways of, you know, to comply with what makes sense.
That makes sense to me.
We would open up to like hearing from TV, subject to right here.
Okay. So subject to. So how many are there? Did you say four?
Nothing, no.
We know of four is what I --
Okay, because the court response team had, they say there's more. And there's one at 1818 Mentor, and there's one on Courtland that I think. Well, if we put on the same, if we put on the same density requirements from the group home line, I mean, there'll, there'll be a prior non-conforming use, so we can't shut down the ones that exist, but if those close, a new one can't open. Like, you know, similar to a close, so many people have to leave before a new one in. So I think that is probably our best bet, is to just include the same density language that exists in the group home one. And then, is everyone on board for subject to conditional approval from the BZA? I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
I'm so glad you came to the meeting.
Well, I think it's already there, or you can use it or not. So again, there's a number of ways of doing it, so that's one approach.
And then that way, I don't think we're preempting the language in the revised code, because like, that's my only real concern, is because they have that 18-month language. You can't have more than 18 months, but if you have a year and a half to try to get your certification. That's a long time. So I agree, you have to call the legislators about that.
Yeah.
No, it's, um.
Eighteen months.
The, the actual statute title, it's prohibition against operation without being certified or accredited, and it's for the rehabilitation, recovery housing. Yeah, and they, they do not have more than eight, they can, the recovery housing residence has not, the language is, has not been operating for more than 18 months and is actively engaged in efforts to obtain certification or accreditation. So, I mean, the accreditation board could just cut them off before that and say no, but they have, in theory, they could have that pretty large window, too. And I think if we were like, you can't operate until then, the state or the, you know, sober living houses would have a good argument of being like, no, we have an 18-month window per the, per state law. I think would be, because that was kind of the easy solution we had tossed out last time, but it's what happens when we operate, skimming, skimming, uh, language. But I think like, yeah, I think if we do the conditional approval as well, so the BZA could keep track of them. And then that way, if they don't show up, and even if they're operating under state legally, if they don't come here, I mean, that's a pretty serious problem as well. So that's another window we could have.
So will that include like a simple registration, just until they get certified, just so that we know they're in the city?
I think, would that make sense, Mike? If it's, or do we have to wait until they're?
I don't know. Like I said, in terms of, you know, the perfect world, they would come to the building department first.
Right.
Draw the occupancy permit, and kind of tease out any sort of use issues, density issues, all the things, even parking provision, all that. But in this case, it's kind of there right now, so the hearing would be rather.
Oh, sorry, Mike, do you?
They can hear.
See, no, here you are. You two can sit up here if you want. If you want, no pressure.
You don't have to stand with Mike, but.
He's not operating.
I know, I told you. I'm sorry, Mike. Okay. So, sorry, I have not done a lot of zoning ordinances in my time on this committee. So would it make sense, then, that they have to seek conditional approval as soon as they start operating, or subject to after the 18-month ago? Like, what do you think makes more sense?
I think a conditional use approach is good. There's certain merits, but sometimes, at least the way it's, remember how it's written in the ordinance right now, there is a, almost a more totality of the municipality, and they allocate X amount per municipality. So, subject to the direction for the law department, you know, what makes sense, because to me, again, maybe I'm more of a generalist, I group maybe all of them in as a group home, and they have different issues and different needs. So it's a matter as to, some people, you know, might view it differently in the community. So I think it's, once we look into it, and then, as I was learning the last week, sober house doesn't have any licensing by the state, they have to get certified by these two bodies. It appears that a lot of people are kind of following the Oxford House approach. So it's nationally recognized, they have gone to Supreme Court, the US Supreme Court. So I think they're used as what they call a peer supervised facility, but at the end of the day, I think the city has to figure out what makes sense, once we also figure out, well, how many do we have in the community? And then in deference to that special needs group, what services are beneficial, because ideally, for me speaking as a layman's planner, then you should be kind of close to those facilities. I don't know if the typical neighborhood residential developed, like, area would satisfy that, aside from just finding a home that's affordable, which is, again, part of the equation, but.
Yeah.
If they're looking at the needs for the clients, then other services would make sense.
Yeah. So, sorry, this is me getting super into the weeds on the language, because it's just how my brain works now. So, Mr. Gary, do you think it would make sense if the conditional use, like, what the, are we allowed, should we include what the BZA should consider in the conditional use permit, like?
Well, the BZA is going to consider.
Everything related to zoning?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And they'll apply the factors.
Because if there's no parking, right, there's no parking, so it's not going to be able to operate anyway. Right, like, in theory, like, they could at least give them that heads up? Does that make sense?
When you say no parking.
Like, because if you have so many, like, I don't know, if there aren't any parking requirements, or if they don't have enough kitchen operations for it. If there's some other, like, zoning issue, right, that would be a reason to say they can't operate as a.
Yes, there, that could be a reason.
Okay. Because those are like what we're finding now, right? It's like the, we can't say whether or not that place is offering actual sober living requirements, but we could say you're violating a million hundred and ten sections. Yeah.
Well, understand that I think they've got the burden of showing their need for this conditional use.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
That makes sense. I just want to make sure we give, like, you and Keith something to work with, so.
We've got stuff to work.
Yes. Okay, good.
But we also have a, you know, Fair Housing Act that we've got to comply with.
No, that all makes sense. And I think everyone here is like pro recovery housing.
That one's actually, yeah.
But that's not what's happening on it. Yeah, yeah, just so.
And I also wanted to share that you can look up the number of recovery housing in our zip code, and it is showing just the four.
Okay.
And one of them is the one on Williams that has been there for many years.
Yeah.
That's like a pathway.
Yeah, there's two on Williams, one on Hopkins.
Where's, what's, where's Lighted Pathway? Seventeen twenty-three.
Yeah.
That's not even, you guys, that's not even my house anymore. That house is torn down.
Well, it's still listed on Ohio's, I mean, the state's website, so that doesn't have anything to do with us, but.
Ah.
It's on the Ohio Department of Behavioral Health.
It's behind your house. Oh, yeah.
It's gone.
Yeah. Okay.
So they're offering.
Well, hopefully, they're not licensed to do that.
If it makes you feel any better, their website has two typos in it on the Ohio Department of Behavioral Health website, and the real correctly spelled one doesn't work anyway. The other two are Izzy's House and then Alphamenter Avenue. Izzy's House also does have two lodged formal complaints with the Department of Behavioral Health. Both of them were investigated in September and are substantiated complaints, so they have been investigated and are legitimate. And the outcome listed for both of them is active quality improvement plan, so it looks like the state is also aware of complaints, and they have some sort of plan in place with the state to improve on them. There's just, it says the description of the complaint was physical property standards, policy, and procedure standards for both, so that could mean a lot of things, but there is awareness, at least up to.
Right.
So who was investigating them?
It's, it's under substantiated, and it says they don't list that unless it's been investigated.
The Ohio Department of Behavioral Health. Okay. All right. I think that answers most of my questions I had about this. It sounds like the law department's on top of it in this one. So, should we?
Well, you can tell you that we're going to actively participate in the hearing.
The hearing, the BZA hearing.
Which comes next week.
I assumed. I assumed you'd get your prosecutor cap back on. Um, okay. So I think that gives us a good spot, and that's why I wanted to make sure, Mr., thank you for coming, Tim, because I did want you here so we could bounce ideas off of you, make sure everyone was clear on what we wanted.
Sure.
Do you, would it make sense for my fellow committee members, once the law department has something drafted, do you want to meet up again, or would you rather just get that in front of council?
I think we could email it over and.
And see.
If all of us feel comfortable with the draft, let's just get it in front of council.
I agree.
My plan is to also be at the 19th meeting.
I have some concern about violating the sunshine law. We're emailing things back.
Can you not send them out to us, and we do not email back?
Yeah, we are going to.
Just so we can put eyeballs on it. And then if any of us has a concern separately, we can reach out to Alexis individually about scheduling a meeting.
I can, sure.
If we want to discuss anything.
I always put, do not reply all on my emails.
Yes, I do.
Do not reply all. Okay.
Okay.
So who reports it out? You report it out?
Are you going to report it out?
Yeah, 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 and well, once we have the draft from the law department, if everything looks fine, we can get it in front of council, as soon, as soon as Tim and Keith. Okay?
How long?
Not tomorrow, sorry. We're, we're moving.
Would it have to wait till after the 19th?
Well, they're not going to have it drafted tonight, I don't think.
After the 19th.
Oh, after the 19th.
I don't see why you'd need to wait until the 19th.
Okay, so we can get it on the second meeting.
Yes, yes. Before this hearing.
We came into the last ordinance meeting, and we were told it was like a quick thing, like.
Well, it just depends. After talking, after talking to the law department, it is, in my brain, every single legal issue is simple, and that's why I'm not a lawyer, because it turns out I'm wrong about that almost all the time.
And we can't discuss this outside of the meeting.
Yeah, we can have one-on-one discussions, but we can't collectively discuss anything.
Yeah.
So it slows down the process, unfortunately. So I spoke one-on-one with Mr. Moore, and his thought is that, well, my suggestion initially, which would have been a simple, easy, is not feasible.
That's adding the.
Yeah. And so while that would have been a faster process, it also probably would not have stood up against council or legally. So, yeah, I mean, unfortunately, like, I would love to say that legislating is a faster rate, but it's often not. And this is still, I would say, a faster timeline than we deal with with those things.
Okay.
Okay. And can I, can you tell me again, why can't we just add the language? What was that again?
Mr. Gary, maybe you can, but there were concerns, being it just tacking sober living onto the group home ordinance. Mr. Moore did not feel like that was feasible.
I don't think it's feasible.
Can you, can you say why?
Because it needs to be passed as a separate, it needs to be passed as an ordinance.
And it's kind of its own-
An amendment to the ordinance.
Yeah. It would need its own definition, like, it would be-
Even though, essentially, to me, they seem like they're all group homes, but they just have different-
You know, there's a process by which we adopt-
Someone didn't like what I said. Sorry.
By which we adopt ordinances, and that process has to be followed.
Okay. Well, that was just brought our attention here.
Well, I understand. Not just a question of just doing it. We have to, we have to follow some procedures, including having waiting.
Right.
And given that it's a zoning matter, you're not supposed to do that by waiting.
Okay. I only ask because when we were all here on the neighbors, there were a lot more of us here last time. You had kind of mentioned adding it on, so we were like, oh, yeah, we don't know, you know? We just assume we could because-
I also don't know.
Okay.
So that's my-
We took your words, and we thought, oh, okay.
Yeah, I apologize that that is not what came through. Because I am not a lawyer, I am very often not correct about what the legal process can actually be.
Yeah, that's the reason we were thinking. How does that work if we don't have this in place before this nineteenth meeting would be under a test seventeen fifty-three we examine?
This ordinance will have no impact on that, will have no impact on the ordinance, because that is an overpopulation, that's a density issue, and we are not, we are not making any kind of legislation surrounding changes in density. So they would not impact each other.
Yeah, okay. They're being charged with what's already on the books. We can't charge them with something that's not on the books.
Did you figure out what the orders were that were against it?
No, I did not, I did not.
Mr. Gary, because it was that they were only allowed to have four people.
So it wasn't-
Right.
Okay, I didn't know if I missed something.
Um-
Well, Mr. Gary, Mr. Moore.
Okay.
But, yeah, I think we won't get it on tomorrow, but I think we can definitely get it on before the next. I'll make sure that, you know, if we need to have a meeting, we will. And if not, we'll, we'll definitely try to get it on the agenda for, not tomorrow, but the next.
If the suggested language is feasible, I feel like all of us are comfortable with that.
Yes, and the law department knows more than all of us. So I trust, I trust their judgment. I just wanted Tim to be here to hear everyone's concerns, what we thought, you know? What? Collaborate.
What's that?
Um, but if that satisfies everyone, we'll just, hopefully, we will, we'll see this on the agenda not tomorrow, but it is. All right. I really just want to say you are more than welcome. I was going to talk about our crypto ATM legislation, again.
I just wanted to check with the folks on Williams, how, is it quieter? I know that there's sort of two separate things. One's a legislative piece.
Yeah.
The other is just, how is it right now for residents? The residents, then it's fine, we don't hear much out of them. The trucks, the garage situation is still a nightmare. I don't know if they rent that garage, I don't know what that is. The trucks starting to go in. Supposedly that was supposedly-
Storage. Or like, did you maintenance?
It was maintenance for Izzy's House, but the thing is, if they rent or not. Is it still, are they coming and going at, oh, strange hours? So that's more of a concern to me, is like a noise.
Yeah.
Because of noise violation, if they're doing work and offloading trucks in the wee hours. Yeah, I just don't really know what they have to do with. But the tenants are okay right now. But it's, you know, the place stays that way.
So just for clarification, it's not the tenants coming in, going in trucks?
No, it's the same from-
It's the business. They have like a shed.
The manager.
Yeah.
Okay.
Didn't they tell you that it was property maintenance is what they use to-
Yeah, I think that's what they-
But I don't believe, like, Izzy's House needs two trucks.
Do you know it's coming in and out?
Tire and-
It's tires?
A truck with a grills and, it's just very odd things.
It's like a scrap business or something?
Yeah.
That's why, I also feel like, well, we were told by the landlord that that was the landlord's property maintenance, not Izzy's House. That was like the property owner's. Why do I feel like all of the-
Doesn't sound familiar, but I do have the contact with the house manager. She's, someone met with them last week, I believe you know that.
She cut her phone, yeah.
And, okay. So I can reach out and see if you can clarify on that.
I feel like they probably rent that garage out, probably maybe the emerge door or something, I don't know.
Hmm, so it might not be at all connected with Izzy's House, but it might be-
Probably maybe a filler issue.
Okay.
But tenants so far-
Is it, I'm just trying, is it behind on the left? Because on the right is the alley.
It's part of the property itself, because then it just, when a residential family lives there, it was just a garage, you know? It's a lot of work, it's a very big garage. Yeah, it's big, it's big. Lights run a lot, and I hate to say it, like, someone went in there for a second, but-
Well, that's not a lot.
And that's not a lot either. So some drywall went in and out, we saw a toilet go in and out.
Okay.
So it's-
So maybe it is landlord.
What exactly?
If it's not Izzy's, then maybe it's-
And maybe like landlord do it. Maybe they have a property manager person there.
Okay.
You know? They aren't allowed to be out, though, at random.
No, they're not.
Okay, yeah. Okay. And I apologize, I wasn't trying to cut anyone off. I just know we had talked earlier this month, so I got, I got a small update, I was not-
So add up now, tenants are fine.
My comment or question is kind of on target with what a super run-up. How are the nuisance complaints going on? I mean, is that something that, I don't even know who follows up with that to collect those, the total of nuisance requests or nuisance complaints that we can follow up with that?
Yeah, the police, I mean, I don't know if they turn any sort of record of that.
Building and health. So each of those, I mean, I can share, because that was one of the challenges when we were working on the chronic nuisance ordinance, is each of those have their own lists, if you will. So if people are calling in a police run, that's going to be in the police bucket. If it's a building department, it's in the building department bucket. If it's a board of health issue, it's in the board of health bucket. And we do not have systems that communicate. So it is a retroactive process where it would be on us to reach out to, and I can tell you right now, this is, this is, people are aware of it, and so there are conversations. And, you know, I'm in contact with Sumner. I left a message for Ralph today, but didn't get a chance to catch back up. So down the road, I envision us having new software that could do all this, and a flag would go up and say, here's an issue. But as of now, it's, it's just very, it's disparate.
Normally, it used to have a team, and it would be like, someone from fire department, the building department, health department. And they would have to go to them, and they would all go out together. They used to be, I don't know what it was called, I don't know if Tim would know what it was called. But they did work together on things like properties that were-
Was it in the eighties?
That was Tom.
Oh, gosh.
That was his, kind of his, but I think it got, it got in trouble.
It might have not, one of the biggest challenges we've encountered is, is the finance. We don't have the funding for a lot of those sorts of things. That doesn't mean that we won't, moving forward, things are looking much, much better. But I know that there were a lot of programs that we had.
I don't believe any budget for that.
Have they just-
Well, but you have to pull them off of what they're doing to do this other task.
They didn't have one?
Well, and then we saw how, but it didn't end well.
So nuisance, as you guys were telling us, you were asking about nuisance, because we've called plenty of times, because we've had lots and lots of issues. If they're not, it's not considered nuisance if they're not arrested? Is that how you're saying it?
They have to be-
Yeah.
Charged. It can be charged.
It's gonna be like a citation issued, a ticket issued.
Right.
There'd be some kind of action taken, so then there'd be arrest, but there has to be some sort of, essentially, think of it as like, if you're going to fire an employee, you can't fire an employee if you've never given them a formal write-out before. There has to be a paper trail. It can't just be like fifteen other employees saying, we really don't like that guy. That has to be like, this day you were given this notice, this day you were given this notice, this day you were given this notice, so you can act on any of those. So now you're considered a chronic nuisance. Unfortunately, I think where we run into issues is whether or not action is taken is on the, is up to the person who is responding to the complaint.
Right.
And we don't have any kind of clear, like, there's no such thing as you receive X amount of complaints, now you have to take action. It's sort of up to the person who is responding to it. And I think all the people we have responding to these kinds of things know what they're doing. I trust their judgment. But that can be frustrating from an outside perspective. You know, if it looks like there is not change being made.
Right.
Any more questions? Sorry.
I would just, in terms of if there are any additional nuisances that you are experiencing, if you can put them on C Click Fix, call the police department. Again, that helps us to track information, and I know that that's-
And we, it's a burden, you know?
Yeah.
That's a burden, yeah.
All right.
Well, it's appreciated, but it's also really, it's really vital, because the number of times I've had people complain about, it's not you, but even neighbors by me complaining about the loud college parties, but then they don't do anything about it. And so if, you know, if you scream in the woods, no one hears you, or if you don't put on C Click Fix, it didn't happen. So if you can continue to do that, that is very important, and that data is, is prided.
Well, it's cold, so right now we haven't had any issue.
That's good.
So let's hope it's savage weather and, you know. But I am concerned when the quick response thing says that there are many that are popping up all over Norwood. But that means there's probably many we don't know about yet.
Well, I would say also, if they're not in the process and we pass this, that wouldn't necessarily be a prior non-performing use, in my eyes, Tim. Sorry, I'm getting real legal with it, but in my eyes, if they are in the process of starting it, and we're at capacity, and we're at capacity, if they, yeah.
You don't know they're up and operating, and we don't know that.
They're not oper, if they are pending certification, then I would argue they're not operating legally, even under the state code, and then they would fall into it.
Okay.
Sure.
And I would also be curious, where, you know, if they are popping up everywhere, I would love information about that. Or is that just sort of a fear or a sense? Because if it is actually, then that's something additional that we could potentially pay attention to.
You know, quick response is the heroin unit, right? Oh, because I don't think they would just say that. There's got to be some documentation. Can we get that? Fine, if we can get that.
I think you can make a claim.
I asked for it today, so.
Yeah, I don't know if that would be considered medical or not.
If we just ask for streets, I mean, I did ask for today for addresses, when I said, okay, just regarding that, how about giving these streets? They sent me a little bit back, but not streets yet, so, just to kind of help to know where they are. Because there might be something operating, and people think, oh, yeah, that, they hear about it. That's on my street too, I was wondering what, why all these people are coming and going. Our issue was, we had a lot of issue. I mean, there was no one recovering at our recovery. But that might not be the issue for all of these places.
Right.
But I still think that-
But if they're not seeking their certification for us to operate.
Right, we still need something in place to, you know.
So the only people we have doing it, which are-
Unsupervised, you know? These places are unsupervised. There's a counselor or someone there overseeing this group six, eight hours a day, and then they leave, and then these sober living people are on the run.
Right.
As supervised, which is where the problem falls.
I mean, it looks very for them and-
Yeah, it's scary for them and for everyone.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, one more thing. So it's like operating in business in the residential neighborhood, and that's not, how, is that a whole other thing? Or is that a profit?
I think once we get language in our ordinance.
Okay.
I think then we can, if they are operating within any of those qualifications, I think then, like, we could start.
Okay.
The problem with this is commercial property.
Right.
But then, the argument-
We have all the tools in our arsenal, the arguments like this.
So the argument that we could be made, and because I talked to Mr. Moore about this as well, is that every landlord rental business, like, every rental property is also a for-profit business, and if the theory is that folks who are living in recovery housing are paying for their room and board, so is everyone else who's renting property in Norwood. And so because they are paying for a residential service, an argument could be made that it is, that it should be zoned as a residential facility.
But rentals don't typically have someone on staff getting paid to take care of them.
But if they did, would that make them, if a landlord had an onsite property manager, would that make them no longer, like, if there's an apartment building that has a property manager that is in an office onsite and works onsite, would that no longer make them a residential property? I think there was just, there was too much concern there about, like, the folks who are paying to live there are paying to live there, and so is everyone else who's in a rental property. So could, we could have called this specific, this was to Izzy's House specifically, that that would not be a very helpful argument in terms of getting them out of there, because the argument could legally be made that they are operating in the same way that any rental residential property, because they're not-
What the BCA ruled on one of Hopkins is that, just a regular rental.
Yeah.
But we got to really be realistic, these aren't regular rentals. And these are affecting people's neighborhoods.
I agree.
My families come in, and I'm like, you know, young people, we have a young couple on our street. They're like, why do they want to stay when they have problems all the time? Oh, one more thing. And with the Xavier, now the one two, they have to live three years on campus.
Yeah.
That's also frightening, because now we have several Xavier houses around us, and what, if these people, they, you know? It might be harder for them to get, they do two years at a time leases with these kids, and they say it gets a little bit harder. Like, my neighbor's talking about our selling. So I feel like we just need something in place, because we could be getting these things ever.
No, I agree. Honestly, I saw that headline and was like, oh, we should.
Yeah.
Which, I know it seems like what we are, we're getting it, I'm sorry.
I'll just, we're not going with what we were a month ago.
Yeah. Anything else? Okay. All right. I appreciate everyone being here, talking about it. Like I said, hopefully, we'll hopefully have that on the next council agenda. And then I'm, if everyone's prepared, I'm just going to move on to the crypto ATM legislation. We've been mulling over for what feels like six months now. But I'm glad we have more people on board with, I mean, I would like to get a proposed, proposed legislation banning the ATMs in front of council, especially after what we heard from our neighbor last time. Thank you, gentlemen. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Scott. I sent everyone links to Stillwater, Minnesota's ordinance, which it's just super plain language that they are not allowed. Yeah. The language is, Stillwater City Council has determined an ordinance prohibiting virtual currency kiosks within the city is necessary and appropriate to prevent crime, protect personal property, and promote the health, safety, and welfare of its citizens. Prohibition far outweighs any benefit they provide to the public. Prohibition far outweighs any benefit they provide to the public and then. Yeah, literally the language banning is, it shall be unlawful for anyone to host, allow, operate, permit, locate or place a virtual currency kiosk within the city. So that's some super plain language. Stillwater, Minnesota is a city of about 20,000 people. They only had four crypto ATMs in their city limits. I think we have a, somewhere between eight and 11. I still have to talk to Chief Sumner, because I gave them the signs and sent them out, but I don't, I think they hit all of them, but I have not double-checked. And I have actually not even gone to every crypto ATM myself. I've gone to quite a handful, but I have not gone to every single one that's on Google Maps, which I should do to make sure our signs are out in the meantime. Time just sneaks up on you. But then Spokane, or Spokane, excuse me. No, that's a big deal there. Washington also passed one. And I sent you guys the link to that. And then if you just go to the 109040, I think I like their language a little. I mean, it's basically the same. But they gave a 60-day effective date. That was really the only thing I'm hung up, hung up on. I mean, I'm fine with banning them, but I do want to make sure businesses have time to get rid of them and we have the signs up in the meantime. Stillwater was like, get them out by Friday, I believe is what, they were like, give until Friday to get rid of these, and I think it was like a Tuesday. So they gave a very small window. If we think 60 is too much, I'm fine with 30, but I think it's kind of a lot for, to be like, hey, unplug those.
Well, and I think if, if folks are receiving monthly payments from those companies, then you're running into legal leases and.
Right.
So I think 30 or 60 days is feasible.
And we're hitting the end of the year, so hopefully it'll be a clean break for these businesses.
Would that be worth doing, like having it be January 1st?
We could do that. I mean, I think that's a good middle ground too, if this gets through.
First year.
Yeah. Although I think to get three readings, yeah, I think if.
Yeah, definitely not.
Maybe just time after the ordinance is effective. Because I think to get three readings, we'd be at the end of December if we get this on, our next agenda. But I just want, I can honest, I can ask the law department to do the same thing. And then, actually, oh, Tim left. I was going to ask our law department, is, if we get this passed, if the other, if our sign ordinance needs to be amended. But another thought I had was if it stays on the books and for some reason the legislature steps in and says you cannot ban these kiosks, we at least still have that, a fallback.
And the runoff stay in until, at least until that 60-day window or however long that was open.
Yeah.
It was over.
That can be done when I'm gone.
And then we can address, is there a need to remove that original ordinance?
I would keep it until, yeah, we see where this is all going statewide, I think would be a good idea. But yeah, that hopefully, I don't think that'll be my problem this time. Okay, did you guys have a preference? So do you think 60 days is reasonable? Okay.
I want to give the businesses enough time.
Yeah. I think we have to like weigh both.
Pick out if they need to actually remove the physical ATM, if it's something a simple change in the functions of it. And I think we would need to, I don't think we would need to, but it would be kind of us to give those businesses notice.
Yeah.
To send them a letter and say, hey, we changed the legislation, here's why, here's how much time we have.
I was going to say, I think it'd be a good idea to get in touch with the chamber, but I don't know how many businesses with the chamber. Maybe a couple.
That's a good question.
I know.
I've got, I'll be at the chamber about tomorrow.
Oh, yeah, you can ask, if you don't mind.
Will you be there tomorrow?
Uh, it is unlikely. We are building, work is a best priority. Oh, yeah.
Been pulling for you all day today.
Okay, well, if everyone is okay with the language, I think we just keep the definition we already have. I mean, I think this is as simple as just tossing it in, unlike, unlike our last one.
Spokane is like incredibly short and sweet, which I, yeah.
Yeah.
They say, here's the definition.
And we already have our definition, so literally just need to throw in at the end, and actually, they're not allowed anymore. But with more legalese. Okay, if everyone's good, I'm, I'm, I don't know if this will pass, but I would at least like to get it in front of everybody, especially now that we, we have a face to the crime that, you know, is getting scanned by these machines. I think like, once you put a face to what's happening, it's. Yeah, I think hopefully, because, yeah, it's very easy to be like, my relative in Dayton had it happen, but they're not a neighbor technically.
I'm very much on the fence about it. I'm leaning towards voting yes to ban them, especially because of what I saw last, I watched the meeting last.
Oh, yeah.
The one that I missed.
Yes.
But I think it's a big deal to ban, you know, things.
It is.
So I'm not taking it lightly.
Yeah.
But I do think the, the harm that these do.
I think it outweighs.
So I'm leaning towards.
I mean, I think that's part of the reason why it took me so long to like, let's just put a ban in front of everybody, let's vote on it, because I was like, will these businesses make money off of it, you know? Not, not through the scamming, but through having the kiosk. And, yeah, and I, like I said, I had a business reach out and they were like, we do make money off of these. And I, you know, prefer if you didn't ban them, but once someone says I've lost $10,000 and there's 11 of them in Norwood and that, what they lost basically outweighs what all those businesses made in a year from the kiosk, and that's just one person we heard from. I mean, I did actually ask Chief Sumner for some numbers. He has not gotten back to me yet, but he acknowledged that I asked. I did want to see like what the numbers looked like for who's been scammed by the kiosk specifically in Norwood.
Been reporting their scams.
Right, that's not even including people who do not.
And I think a lot of folks do not. I will say, and in terms of, because I am also wary to ban anything. I think in many situations, a ban means we are totally removing the public's access to something. That is not the case in this situation. We are removing one route of access. There is no barrier to you going home and purchasing crypto on your computer, on your phone, at your friend's house.
Yeah.
It is so widely accessible and widely available that we are just removing one point of access.
That might stop a few people.
May, yes, and, and I know that this has been said before, but sophisticated investors are not using it anyway. The fees on these things are egregious.
20 to 30%.
Yeah, the national average is 19% fee versus purchasing it online is like a 3% fee for most places. So folks who are legitimately wanting to invest are already not doing it because it is fiscally unwise. But I, I agree, ban is, is a powerful thing to do and I hesitate to do it in most situations, but especially in this case, because we are not stopping anyone from, this is not a hemp-derived THC ban. We are not removing people's access to something.
I would argue we are not doing government paternalism with this one. I think this is, get, get your scams out of here. More than, more than people shouldn't buy cri, buy crypto if you want. I don't care. If you want to buy crypto, go nuts. That is not my business, and I will not make it my business, but people, unfortunately, our neighbors getting scammed, I will make my business. Unfortunate for the scammers. But I think if everyone's okay with this language, like I said, I just want to get it in front of council. And if it doesn't pass, it doesn't pass, but I'm at the point where I want to try to help with this, so. Anything else from anyone? All right. I think that's it for us. Steve, I think we're all good. Thanks, everybody.